Quickly, here is a thing from.
I, I would like to call this meeting to order. Michelle, would you please call roll?
Mayor Sue McNamara.
I'm here.
Brock McDonald.
Here.
Greg Bogosian.
Here.
Andrew Lowe.
Here.
Jeff Schwag.
Here.
Lynn Majet.
There.
And Hanora Schiller still isn't on, but neither is Patrick. Okay. But we do have a quorum, Mayor.
Oh, good.
Okay. So will you all join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. First thing is, I'd like a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Ayes, nays? All in favor? Aye.
Any changes?
Any changes?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Or?
I'm sorry, what, Lynn?
You're approving the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add aye. We'll discuss workers' compensation.
Okay, I.
Under your business.
Did we not do that? Discuss bid for workers' comp?
Oh, well, it wasn't posted.
Okay.
So we have to amend it.
All right. Thank you.
Is there a second on the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay. And so we had a first and a second on the.
Agenda approval.
Yeah, and what was the? Oh. Voice vote.
Well, to modify, sorry.
Yeah.
Ayes and nays, please? Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Any nays? No? We're good. Okay. The minutes? Motion and a second to accept the minutes from last month? All in favor, aye?
A motion that we accept the minutes from August.
Second? Ayes? Nays?
Aye.
All right. Remarks, petitions, and complaints. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they wish to make? No? Moving right along. We need to wait until 7:00 PM for a public hearing?
Correct.
So can we go on and do other things? Oh, good. Okay. Let's move to the report. Officer Conley is not here tonight, so in his stead will be Officer Chris Pullman. Chris, would you like to read your report, please?
Sure.
Owen.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
We all survived the weekend. So this is what Lieutenant Conley gave me. I'll kind of read it on there. For the month of August of 2023, we had 68 radio calls and we also initiated 77 activities by the officers of the work in Clarksdale Valley. We took four crime reports. I'll go over those if it doesn't matter. But those are the reports we took and we did investigations on. We had 20 burglar alarms. Most of them probably were at the Mercy Clinic, but that's how it works. One open door and the midnight crew sent out 35 notifications for open garage stores, letting people know that their garages were open at night. We only had two accidents reports, which was a little surprising. We had one that was at the early childhood center over off of Ballard Road next to the middle school. And the second one was at Clark's, over at 2351 Clark'sville, which is Marquette High School. Minor accidents, no injuries or, no people be told. Traffic safety, he's got down. We had 14 moving violations and five non-moving violations, which we had taken to print it out. And we had another 23 warnings that were issued. So it gives us a total of 42 tickets for the phone. No arrests, so everybody was good. That's nice. Fraud reports, residents on Curersdale mailed several pieces of mail. Basically, we're having a lot of problems with this, but the mail was checked later. Cash for 10 times the amount written. So it was forgery. Couple of people got into it up at the country club. Employees asked for board to the prosecutor attorney's office for them to review. I said, I mentioned earlier on the alarm, we had an open door to check the house, make sure everything's fine, and there was no crime that occurred. And the last thing is, I guess we've been working in the Dunhill neighborhood. Check for speeders, stop sign violations and that type of stuff. We've been stepped up in enforcement. I know he's got down here one warning and one citation, but I know I wrote that, so there's other people that have done other stuff, so I'm quite there. Nothing to report at the high school and Crestfield Middle School was also good. Just got to kind of get going. Any questions about any of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Speeding.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you're monitoring the Dunhill subdivision for speeding and, and stop sign violation.
Yes, ma'am.
What about speeding in the neighborhoods that are over the 25 mile? And, and as well as the school buses? The school buses and Clarkson Farm barrel in there as if they're at the raceway. I mean, especially the 230 bus is ab- I mean, a friend of mine was at my house.
Okay.
And the bus goes by and his girls are in school only at Wild Horse, different part of Rockwood.
All right.
And he said, does that bus always go that fast through the subdivision? I said, yeah, sometimes faster.
Okay. Well, it's something we need to take a look at. And we'll, we'll do, uh, I might send it in that I will. I just wrote down a note on it for Lieutenant Conley to take a look at and we'll see if we can get somebody in there tomorrow on Clark'sville.
It's not just the bus.
It's everybody.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. And Chris, I'm sorry. Yes, Chris. Chris Conley, Chris Pullman. Too many Chris's. Chris Conley is also watching.
Yes.
So. Okay, we're good.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. My turn. Mayoral update. I had a pretty exciting month. I got to go to the Marquette Mayor's Bowl, which is the annual game. This was the sixth annual game that Marquette played Lafayette, and it was the sixth victory Marquette had. So I got to do the coin toss and the Mayor's Bowl will come back to live again for another year in the Marquette trophy case. On Tuesday, I had a really interesting opportunity. I got to meet the governor at Marquette when he came to sign the education bill into, into being. It is 9.8, it represents about $9.8 billion in education funding for the state of Missouri. And it was a really neat experience because of all the students that were invited to come and attend. It was, to me, it was really impactful because I was watching these kids do something that we've all done. We've all run for an elective office, but these kids are 16, 17, 18, and it gives them an idea of who they are, what they're doing, what we're doing, how we do it. And I, it's just exciting. I'm, I'm glad to see that young kids are taking an interest in that. They were from government classes. Another thing we, I managed to get done this month is I spent a considerable amount of time talking to the St. Louis County Department of Transportation. And after years, we managed to get the sidewalks along Cursmel Road surveyed, formally surveyed. So we now know where, who owns what sidewalks all along Cursmel Road. It's always been sort of a question as to who can fix what, who's responsible for what, because the road wanders, as do the sidewalks, so now we know for sure. One interesting.
The question, what are we responsible for?
The city? Nothing. We, we are not responsible for anything. The county and/or the subdivisions or the residents who back up there are responsible for that. And to that point, one of the things that, the reason this all came up and came to a head at this point was because Kings Point wants to use their ARPA funds to repair the sidewalk out in front of the, it would be the southernmost portion of their subdivision. And Jeff, you'll recall, they ripped out the northern portion several years ago.
Yes.
And they would like to retain and improve the subdivision, or the sidewalk on the southern front of their subdivision. St. Louis County offered an alternative, an opportunity, which I think is good. It's a double-edged sword. If they, they are willing to move the easement for any subdivision who wishes to do so, making, and basically dedicating that sidewalk and responsibility to that subdivision. Kings Point wants to do this, so they will, I will, I will help them do that. This means going forward, Kings Point will be responsible for the care and maintenance of the sidewalks. The county won't have anything to do with it. But the good side of that, that's, can be the double-edged bad side. The good side of that is Kings Point now can make whatever modifications, improvements, adjustments to those sidewalks in whatever manner they wish. They do not have to adhere to the St. Louis County, state, or federal guidelines that require a depth of a foundation, or width, or curves, or anything else. They can do pretty much what they want. So they are going to do that. I mentioned something to Dunhill about that. They're, right now, sort of ambivalent because apparently a couple of years ago, they had made some complaints and the county was very responsive in coming out and assuming, assuming the care for that. So if Cursmel Estates wishes to do that, that's an option as well. Next thing, I will be going to the municipality conference. It's the annual conference in Kansas City this next week. The last conference I went to, which was in Jeff City, was where I found some really interesting information that may or may not help Cursmel Trails with their dam issue. I'm still pursuing that. And it's also where I started the conversation about sidewalks and finally got a response from somebody from the county on maintenance, et cetera. So one other thing, we received Dunhill's completed application, their ARPA application today at about 3:30. They did submit three bids with their applications, so we'll discuss that and that will be on October's meeting.
Did you ask her why she's but checked no on the application?
I did not. I didn't hear about that until after, until just before we were getting ready to do this. So like I said, it came in pretty late. Michelle and I talked late, so.
And that application was sent in? What would that have been? Been at the August 1st, or August, yeah, August 1st meeting? And that's when they turned that in? And so at that point, she only had one. At one bid. So now she's received the other two and that's, that's where those just kind of slid in, but real late in the game today.
Can we ask her to revise or fill or comply?
They're supposed to submit it as one package. Even if you're resubmitting, 95% is all the same. They're supposed to put it all in one nice package.
Well, on the application, though, she checked, do you have three bids? No.
So she should have changed that and submitted.
She does have three bids.
I know. But I agree with Lynn. We should have the application revised and don't just go with an email or something to that effect.
Okay. And Michelle, Patrick shows is in the waiting room?
Oh. Oh, I don't like waiting rooms. Okay.
Sue, did you say that Cursmel Estates might want to do some sidewalk work also?
I would leave that to the folks from Cursmel Estates.
I think she said the option of taking ownership of the sidewalk would be ours. I'm not sure that interest is there.
I believe there has been some discussion in the past, but primarily at this point, their dedication of the funds will go towards street maintenance.
Dedication of what funds?
The ARPA funds.
Haven't they spent all of their money already?
They spent it? No.
I mean, committed it to a.
Well, yeah. That's, it's been committed to streets.
So this might include sidewalks?
Pardon me?
No. Not at this time.
Okay. That's, that's my question. Thank you.
No. Does not include, at this point, it does not include sidewalks. The option is there going forward in the future. Should they want to assume responsibility for that from the county, they can have the sidewalk moved out of the easement and then it will be Cursmel Estates' responsibility. But I haven't heard that they wish to do that at this point. Okay. Okay. Status report from Alderman. One other question, or one other comment I want to make. I have heard from a couple of the subdivisions. I believe Kings Point was one, Cursmel Trails might have been another, and I think Dunhill was one, who indicated they've had some communication from their alderman. And I don't recall specifically who it was. Brock, did you contact Dunhill?
All in Ward 2.
Good. Awesome. Thank you.
I don't think I'm going to do it every month, but a few times a year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's all that's necessary. And that's fine. Just as long as they know how to get in touch with you too.
Yes.
Andrew, did you reach out to somebody, I think, at Cursmel Trails? Bill Shucott, I think, said he had talked to you at one point. Or maybe.
Not recently.
Maybe it was Jeff. Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Cool. So status report from the alderman. Greg, you want to start off?
Sure. All right. I met with Emma Gore, the new general manager of the club. And with Sue's agreement, I've said I would be glad to be the liaison between the city and the club. Emma Gore and I really had a good conversation. She informed me of a few things they're planning to do that we need to know about. One is we, we did approve, the planning and zoning did approve a very high net at the back of the driving range. The, if you've driven by there, you'll see the telephone poles are laying on the ground, grass growing high around them. They've been there since earlier this year. The owner of the company unfortunately died. And she thinks they'll be able to resume this work, perhaps with a different company this month. But right now, that's where that stands. She informed me they're going to come to us to planning and zoning for putting a fence around the pickleball court. This would be six feet high and it would be woven with black vinyl, making it a solid fence, because she said they need a windscreen because the pickleball courts are high up there on the ridge and the pickleball balls are being blown off course by the wind. I told her I thought that would be a heavy lift, but that's what their plan is. So they're going to come to the, us in about six to nine months with that because the fiscal year starts in April and they want to start that work then. The other thing she mentioned is the lake-to-creek conversion they're doing around 17 on the, on the championship course. This is a project that requires the Army Corps of Engineers approval. And they actually said, we approve removing man-made dams and restoring streams to their natural bed. And we would be reluctant to do the same for anyone else who needs some work done on a dam, which in my opinion raises a question about the dam question in, excuse me, the question about the dam in, in Cursmel Trails. Whether they, I mean, they do need an Army Corps of Engineers permit and the Army Corps of Engineers, according to Emma Gore, is loath to give that to repair a dam rather than removing a dam. Just something for us to know.
I think to the best of my knowledge, you may know, Jeff, Cursmel Trails has already spoken with the Corps of Engineer. Whether they have a formal permit or approval, I don't know. But I know they've been involved with them to a pretty good, pretty great extent through this process to this date. And I don't know of any refusal or denial that the Corps has visited upon them. But I don't know.
She made it very clear, the Army Corps is, is encouraging people, if I may just use that word, to remove man-made dams and restore streams to their natural flow rather than spending Army Corps of Engineer money or permits to do something like, something else. The other thing I, I broached with Emma was the suggestion, and the mayor and I have discussed this, of having an occasional coffee with the mayor or in the morning, or a beer and wine with the mayor in the afternoon, as well as a location for us to have the semi-annual trustees meetings. This room is frankly not very nice for these sorts of events. And so she gave me a tour of the facility and showed me the various rooms that would be available for that, which looked pretty good to me. These are not free. She said there is a minimum charge for those, but they would waive that for us. So if everyone thinks this is a good idea, we'll continue pursuing that for these venues, for, for those kinds of meetings.
I do.
Yeah?
Okay. That's everything I've heard.
Okay. Cool. Lynn?
It's fairly quiet in our area. West End and then we'll talk about ARPA, did their street repairs, so we'll have that later. They've also started their street light change. They are removing the old ones and then the new ones are going to be installed half to the first of the year sometime when the weather changes.
Cool.
And then Pebblewood resident had that tree, Long Clarkson, they were notified and removed it.
That's great.
Yay.
Yeah, huge tree. You know what she said to me? She called up today and she said, I hope I remove the right one.
It's fairly obvious.
This is on the Berman, Long Clarkson?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Was it a pine?
Yes.
It's still there?
Oh, they removed one.
Well, there's another one. There's another one.
Oh, good.
Okay. Well, I didn't get a chance to get by there today.
When?
I saw it today.
It was removed today.
Or removed today? Okay. Maybe.
Okay. All right.
I noticed it today.
I saw it in the morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Good.
Any more, Lynn? Okay.
So I, like you said, I reached out to everyone. In Ward 2, I got out of six emails I sent out. I got four responses. One of them was my neighborhood. Surprisingly, I responded to myself. Forest Hills Ridge, I had a long conversation with the HOA president, Tom Beck, about a longstanding issue with vehicles and school buses parking in their neighborhood, because their neighborhood directly across from the rear of Marquette High School. So around drop-off and pickup time around Marquette, they're, they've recently started to have the issue where vehicles are essentially blocking the entire street, double or triple parking across the street to pick kids up for, from Marquette. And they did, he did note, and I went by and took a look, they do have no parking signs, but legally what people are doing are not parking, they're stopping. So there's really nothing anyone can do about it other than to politely ask them not to do that. So he's asking us if there's anything we might be able to do.
Could the signs be changed to say, no parking or standing?
Uh, no parking, stopping, or standing. Yeah, which we would need to do an ordinance for that. But yeah, there's like Schedule 3 in the code that does designate their street as no parking. But I think really what the spirit of it was originally was no stopping, because that's, I'm sure, what was the original issue, which is what caused them to have a special line item on Schedule 3. So I figured just amending Schedule 3 to include stopping would partially or fully solve the problem. He also says he gets it from a parent's perspective. You need to pick up your kids sometimes. And so he would, he said he would even be able, he'd be open to having no parking, stopping, standing this side of the street. And maybe we talk to the fire department and see which side of the street would be best suited for allowing people to stop in terms of getting a fire truck in there if they had to.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Chris had to leave, so he, if he was here, he could probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could probably weigh in on that. But Tom was even like, if you want, we can even, someone get me a bucket of paint. I'll paint the curb on the, he was talking about maybe doing on the inside, where their little, their little patch of common ground is, maybe making that the side where you can't stop. He was like, I'll even, if someone brings me the paint, I'll paint it. And I'm like, we've, we've got a paint guy. We'll, we'll, we'll see, we'll see where we go with this. But he says it's obviously been a longstanding problem, but it's gotten significantly worse recently, to the point where you can't even get in and out of your driveway for the most part around when Marquette's mostly dismissing.
I've noticed that coming over 3, it's, it's packed.
Yeah. And they even say they have school buses staging there. Like if the buses are there a little bit early, they'll have a, a school bus or two blocking part of the road.
Oh, no. No, no.
I don't, I don't know if they're supposed to do that.
It's just people being, don't want to go in a regular driving entrance.
You're right.
Wait longer behind some people.
Yeah.
Well, should I contact the school and say, hey, you know, you got some bus drivers over there? Should I contact the school and say, "Hey, you know, you got some bus drivers over there, that's..." I mean, it's bad enough that we have residents, pedestrians, or civilians, if you will, but school buses, school buses, I mean, seriously?
Occasionally, it's, he didn't, he said that was not a regular problem, but it's been, it's happened recently.
Perhaps some photos of these.
Yeah, I have one photo, um, that he sent me, I think he or his wife took from, just like their front door, basically. But yeah, we could get some, any day of the week, we could get a, an evidential photo.
Sorry, um...
There was a, a similar situation on the street called Jenny...
Excuse me, Greg, that's a note. At seven PM, we need to call, um, our public hearing, and I set my alarm for six fifty-nine, so that's, we got about thirty seconds.
Just a situation on Jenny Cliff, in my subdivision, where high school kids park there, they can easily walk, so they, they don't pay for parking.
Right.
And the street gets pretty filled up with you.
Well, same thing goes on at, um, Dunhill, back in the back, so... So, I still have six fifty-nine and a couple of seconds. Can we start at six fifty-nine in a few seconds?
Yes, I'll read the, um, the notice.
Yes, please.
A public hearing, City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri. Notice is hereby given, the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, will at seven PM on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, hold a public hearing at the Clarkson Executive Center to discuss the following three items. A request from Crestview Middle School to install an electronic message center sign at Valley Row, well, that sits up, at the Clayton Road entrance, to discuss four oh five point oh eight oh E area regulations and building lines by adding language regarding corner lots and sight distance triangles, and number three, to discuss four oh five point oh six oh E one, E three, and E five, regarding encroachment into the setback to include the word "structure." Signed, Sue McNamara, Mayor, City of Clarkson Valley.
Okay, um, would someone from Crestview, such as Dr. Christopher Brandif, care to address this, or say, make any comments?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm going to let a representative from Excel sign, answer the questions, and be here to follow up.
My name's Matt, owner of Excel signs, so, like Dr. said, if you have any questions or concerns or whatnot, kind of detail.
Do any of you folks have any questions, I mean?
Is, are you just looking for a, I've seen the sign, not recently, but it's just kind of end of life, looking for a refresh? This new one looks pretty fancy, it's, we got one at my kid's elementary school, so...
Yeah, this is approved from last year's administration and the history of years, so, um, we're just looking for your approval to finalize it. And I think, uh, you know, it's up to me to control the best practices with its usage, so it's not a distraction or a deterrent, and, you know, it actually conveys the message it's supposed to convey. So that's kind of my promise to the residents and taxpayers, that we would use it for the best practice.
So instead of, uh, having someone go out and change physical letters, I imagine you'll have some sort of software to control it now?
Yes, sir.
Cool, looking forward to it.
Is it the same size, as the old sign?
Yes, sir.
From a changing of the content, it's, I read a little bit about it, but it's, so it's not a local server, it's, it's cloud-based, in terms of making sure the right people are able to get in and the wrong people aren't? I guess how to, where does that run through, or who hosts that service, do you know?
Next LED, uh, to make her report, or sell that.
Okay, so it's on their servers, okay.
Oh, vulnerability is always an issue, especially with some of the pranksters we have out there, I can only imagine.
Yeah, thankfully, um, just my company alone, we have over thirty-four in the air, and we've never had an issue yet, but like I said in the meeting last week, we've promised that there's all different levels of that, but I've been in the industry fourteen years, and never looked like that happening, so...
Knock wood.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it, folks?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Anybody else, any other questions? Do you all have any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you need us for the, is that it for me, or I just wanna make sure?
Well, we're, we're going to vote on that, and that'll be first in our new business, but we still have unfinished business to get through.
Sure, okay. I just wanna make sure if you have anything else.
Okay. Um, then we have a couple other items we need to discuss, which would include changing a couple of words in a couple of our ordinances, and I would like to know if anybody has any objection to waiting till we get down to new business to do that.
Hearing none.
Hearing none? Uh, I think that means the public hearing is closed. And welcome, Anora, how are you doing?
Fine.
Good, glad you could be here.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we left off with, Andrew, you have anything?
I'm sorry, I had a couple others.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brock, go right ahead.
Did want to report that the Manners and, um, Forest Hills Ridge, they both told me they've, well, I know personally, on one of those, they've signed the police enforcement agreement, and at least one other neighborhood is actively discussing it, and they, they plan to get that back to us shortly. Dunhill, they installed some fancy radar speed limit type signs. So those are up and running, and they're getting all kinds of interesting data about all the problems that are out there regarding speeding in their neighborhood.
I know they've got some concerns, and I, it was nice to see that the police were able to issue a couple of heads up, stop this.
I know, sorry, I said, I said that...
Pardon me?
Did they pay for those themselves?
They did.
Yes.
They did?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I said that was Dunhill, that was actually Forest Hills Club Estates did the radar signs. Sorry, we spoke on that, had the wrong item. My other, Dunhill also mentioned that speeding was an issue, so I had that crossed up in my mind, but...
Did you, did you say this is allowing the police to issue citations?
No, it does, it's not linked to the police department or anything, but it does collect data and would probably help make the case, I suppose, for increased, um, patrols around certain times of day, for example, they could say, from eight to ten, the average car is going twenty percent over the speed of limit, or something like that, and they could tell the Lieutenant Connolly and his department to focus on that time of day, if they had to focus on one over the other. But yeah, that was all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andrew?
Just one thing for me to report, uh, we have a resident in Curzmal Estates who is having an ongoing issue with some odor and some standing water near a sewer, and has been in contact herself with MSD, and she reached out to First Mayor McNamara. And so now Jeff and I have offered to reach out and try and help in any way we can. Uh, I'm not sure what that means yet, but I will keep you guys posted. This was the middle of last week, we all agreed to enjoy our nice, long weekend and reengage this week, so we have to follow up with her sometime this week. That's it for me.
And thank you very much for that, that is a longstanding issue for them. I know they've had problems over the years, several people down there have had some sewer issues, that odors that are difficult to deal with, so thank you, so... Jeff?
I have nothing at this time.
Anora, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, no, I don't, but could we skip ahead and vote, so they can leave?
Um, do you wanna jump ahead to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's fine.
That would be...
So, um, thanks, Anora, so we are able to discuss the resolution for the Crestview Middle School sign, uh, motion and second to discuss?
Your motion first, right?
A motion and a second? I'm asking for both?
Second.
And we can take a voice vote for this, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion's passed. Is that good?
I thought those to discuss.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask you that earlier, and I didn't get to it. I didn't get here early enough. Could you read it first, please, I'm sorry?
A resolution issuing a special use permit to Rockwood School District, authorizing the location of an electric message center monument sign at sixteen oh two five Clayton Road in the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri.
Okay.
That's first reading, we read second?
Um, on, on, um, resolutions, you don't have to.
Okay. So, in that case, can we now vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any discussion, so we can get the next question?
I...
Make the mark.
We did, we did motion, we did second, is there any discussion?
Any questions?
No questions, no discussion?
Sure, no.
I'd like to call for a vote, a vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion's passed, resolution is passed. Gentlemen, you have your sign.
Giving up another night.
Thanks, Anora, that was a good tip. Okay, uh, that is it for the Alderman's report. Um, the city attorney is available by Zoom, but I don't know if he has anything to report. He's, um, been a little under the weather this last week or few days, so, um... Patrick, are you there?
I cannot unmute him, ask to unmute.
You wanna just call him?
He did, he did say he wasn't going to report.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
I cannot hear you on Zoom, but here on YouTube, I have nothing to report, so I hope you can hear me.
Okay, hang on just a second, I think we can adjust...
Well, he was saying he couldn't hear you through the Zoom meeting, but he could hear us on YouTube, so he's been...
Can you hear us a little better, Patrick?
And I bet there's a delay?
Can we...
He also said there, he didn't have any.
He said he has nothing to report.
Okay, alright, well, he's, I'm, I'm gonna ask him for some clarification to some of the stuff we're going forward to discuss. So, um, okay, so the ARPA committee report, Jeff, Lynn, and Brock, where do we stand with...
I'll start off.
Thank you.
See, maybe others, uh, we have...
I can hear you on YouTube?
What's that?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask him for some clarification to...
Thank you, Patrick. There's a delay.
Yeah, this is about fifteen seconds away.
We good?
Alright, Patrick, there's, just FYI, there's a delay, so if you could, um, just be silent for a few seconds, we'll, we'll get to you, thanks. Lynn?
Okay, alright, we'll go over where we are with the ARPA funding. There are three fully approved projects, that was West Hampton, which we have on the agenda tonight to approve payment of the funds. Uh, the Manners have their project in, and I think we're waiting for their, uh, receipt of their finaling waiver before they get their reimbursement. And then Clarkson Mills Circles, which was six thousand dollars, we, has been approved, but we have not heard back from them. Uh, we've got one application, uh, for approval tonight, that's Curzmal Estates. And then the other subdivisions, uh, it was Dunhill today that came in, so they, there's one that will be coming up, and then the other nine subdivisions, Kevin got to step two on the, the applications. So when they do that, we'll, uh, approve them as they come in, and that's pretty much where we are. West Hampton was thirty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars. The Manners was looking for twenty thousand, one hundred ninety, and then Clarkson Mills, six thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars. And Curzmal Estates is gonna be ninety-five thousand, and that's a change.
Four, six, seven.
So that's pretty much where we are, I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything, but...
I guess I'll just point out, for people not on the committee, that the folks who haven't submitted their applications yet, they basically all have to be in by the next meeting. They've only got twenty-seven days until their deadline of October second expires, so...
Well, I would ask...
I assume we'll have a lot on the agenda next time.
Yeah, I would ask all of you to reach out to your subdivisions, anyone who has not submitted their application, use it or lose it, clock's ticking. So... Okay, Lynn, or you're, you've addressed that, Jeff, Brock, either one of you have any comments to add to the ARPA situation?
No.
Okay. Technology Committee, yay, heroes of the day. You guys have been hard at work, thank you very, very much. You wanna...
You're welcome.
Update?
We have like a lot to say, so...
Awesome, yeah.
And as I was writing this, I was like, "I can't say all this, I'll be here all night." So I guess we'll, we'll keep it super high level. Obviously, streaming, last month it went fine, um, we finished, that's for proof of concept stream, so we went ahead and got the extra equipment, which you all see in front of you now, so this is the entirety of what we'll use, um, until it maybe presents itself that we could use something else or more, but I think so far what we have works well, so... From an expense perspective, that's done, and congratulations to Sue, 'cause it was your idea to, to kind of make it the new face of how people are able to be more engaged without maybe having to physically be here, so that was great. As far as the city's website, um, we're transitioning away, obviously, from the Miller Group to, to new service providers. Our registration, which is kind of like the phone book of the internet, we've transferred that from the Miller Group over to Google Domains, that was done just this morning, I think it was finalized. There's sort of a key exchange they have to do, so now Google tells people how to get to our website when they type in ClarksonValley.org. But that was really key, that was almost the most important thing, was to get our registration switched over to a platform that we actually have some control over. At the Miller Group, we didn't, we didn't have any of the key, they were holding all the keys, they were guarding all the doors, and, and now we get to do that, so it's a much more important, it's a much more secure way and consistent way of managing our website.
Is there much difference in what it's charged?
It's cheaper.
It's cheap.
Significantly cheaper.
That's good.
Yeah.
We like cheaper.
It's a fra, it's a fraction of what the Miller Group was charging. Likewise, for hosting, which is essentially the service you pay for to host your pages and your pictures and your agendas and anything else, the Miller Group's currently still doing that, we're on contract with them through the end of the year, and they'll continue to serve us, but after that, we have to find someone new, and Andrew and I are going through the process of evaluating too many, uh, potential, uh, service providers for that, but, um, once we land on one, we'll, we'll start the process of transitioning our website over to that new service provider, and we can't really plan too much in advance, because every service provider has a somewhat different onboarding process for established websites. If we were starting a brand-new one, it'd be very easy, but anyway, so that'll be something we do later in the year. You did most of the email stuff, do you wanna talk?
No, have at it.
Jeez, I'm good.
You're doing great, keep going.
Wow, alright. City email addresses, which is something we talked about previously, everyone here has a new city email address.
Yay.
All the Aldermen and Sue, we're all using them now, so it's just our firstnames@ClarksonValley.org, as opposed to Charter, AT&amp;T, or, or whichever. And effectively, effective tonight, we're only gonna be using our internal email addresses, so... It's easy to make the mistake of accidentally putting the wrong person on the email, so if anyone's responding to an email, and you notice that there's an external Lynn's emails on there by mistake or something, just take that off and add the internal one, that way it all ends up in the right place, and we don't have to worry about any sunshine requests going into our personal lives or anything like that.
No, I'm, I'm thrilled with that, thank you very much.
And, um, Michelle and Andrea also will have internal email accounts as well, but it's a matter of transitioning years and years of different email accounts down into one for them, so it's gonna, I had, I have to do it when they're not working, 'cause otherwise it would be a nightmare, so this weekend I'm gonna get them transitioned over, um, which will be good.
Excuse me, is that why they're gonna be sending stuff to our personal email this week?
Possibly, yeah, I, I'm not quite sure, I mean, we hadn't, we hadn't made it a, a rule or effective immediately, kind of, "Don't use your personal emails anymore," that was just a moment ago, so... To send stuff to our personal emails so far this week, I guess, would have been okay. But now, when they're sending stuff out, just to make... But now, when they're sending stuff out, just to make sure we're all on the same page, it's, it's only going to the Clarkson Valley addresses from now on. And I guess, uh, this is like a best practice in terms of, when you do send emails, and sometimes we'll obviously have to email trustees or residents or whomever, um, just kind of keep in mind that all the emails in that chain that were exchanged before, talking about the matter, they still are probably down below, if you kept scrolling, so if you're going to add somebody outside of City Hall, make sure that there's nothing in there that.
Proofread.
Was purely internal discussion and not really meant for an, an external consumer, so, uh, nice thing about it, you'll notice as you're writing emails, that if you do add someone who has an outside email address, it'll, it flags it.
Yeah.
So it's clear that you do have an outside party in the, in the conversation now.
The exception to that, I would say, would be Patrick and Lieutenant Connolly, who are not going to have Clarkson Valley email addresses, but are, of course, part of our internal business, um, at some junctures, so, but they would be the only exceptions.
Um, other than emails, the, the new computers for City Hall, they're all up and running and ready to go, they're not physically in City Hall right now, um, that's going to be part of my project this weekend, of moving all the old hardware into storage and, and putting all the new computers and all the related stuff in the office, and the big thing is transitioning all of our files from all the different computers we have, putting them onto Google Drive, so there's just one place now where everything lives, and, you know, Michelle can access them at home, or you can, if we're just talking, we can pull it up on our phones, and it'll just be a lot easier to coordinate and stuff. The one issue we're still working through, and I'll talk, I wasn't going to bother you, Michelle, with this ahead of time, was Data Pro for the accounting.
The accounting.
It's not compatible anymore, because it was developed in 1994. Um, that, to the best of Microsoft's attempts to make backward compatibility a thing, 30 years of coding changes has made it so that we're probably going to have to do something. We'll, we'll call up our rep of Data Pro and see if they have either a different product that's newer, that we can just migrate to, or something else, but, um, we'll figure that out, but that was the one thing I couldn't make work, was the software from three decades ago.
We have, sorry to interrupt. We have a relatively simple chart of accounts, so.
Yes.
Plenty of options that shouldn't be too difficult to implement.
That is true.
But we're going to keep it easy for you as well.
Historical stuff, I don't, no idea.
Historical stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, other than that, I, I agree, it should be pretty straightforward. Um, the city website, if you were to browse around, there've been a lot of changes, a new page here and there, and just sort of restructuring the format of things, so it's a little more consistent, and it's a little easier to view on your phone, if you want to look at, if you're just sitting at lunch and you want to see what we did at the meeting or anything else, it's just easier to, to digest, and all of our new emails and contact information is on the website as well, so, um, that, that was sort of a big project. I went through, audited over 1,700 links that are on our website, to see if any, how many of them were broken or shouldn't, should be removed, and there's only 29 of them.
No.
We're no good. 29 out of 1,700, we're no good, so.
That's, yeah, wow.
Well, I didn't do it manually. There's a script, there's a script for that, but I was, I was able to fix about a dozen of them, but a lot of the broken links were CDC COVID-era links that the CDC has deleted, so we're just linking to stuff that doesn't exist, so I got rid of all links that take you to dead ends and.
This page?
Random things like that, so.
Page does not exist?
Yeah, COVID does not exist anymore. They've deleted that, but that was all I had.
Okay, wow, well, you guys, and, and I'm just so grateful, you and Andrew have just done a yeoman's job, so it's, you're amazing, I'm so impressed, so, I don't understand half of what you're saying, but I'm impressed.
And David Grable, too, he, he's answered a lot of questions for us along the way, too.
Yeah, David's not here.
Because his company is, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, I was just wondering, when we have the meetings that are online, uh, that, when we're talking to Patrick, is he on Zoom, so can all of us be on Zoom instead? Or like, two or three people be on Zoom if they're out of town, or?
Oh, yeah. In a meeting like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the intent. Uh, in fact, Patrick is on Zoom right now.
Okay, and so, we can hear him talking, he doesn't have to use chat?
Yeah, his, his volume, our volume on this laptop was just turned way down, a few minutes ago, which is why we didn't hear him.
I just turned it up a.
Yeah, so we'll, if he has anything else, well, when you talk to him about it, you'll be able to hear him.
Oh, right now, his, he's muted and his video is out, so.
Yeah, but, um, he was listening to us on YouTube with like a 15-second delay, which is why there was a little back and forth before, but, yeah, that'll all, we'll iron out some of the kinks as time goes on.
Okay, Greg and Lynn, I believe you have some numbers to report for us, in terms of what we've accrued so far in our new investments, yes? How's it going?
Do you have any numbers?
No.
Yes, so as I reported before, we put in over 90% of our money into high-yielding investments. The, um, Michelle reported to me today that since the inception of that, we've earned, what'd you say, $3,000?
$3,990.
So that's not right, because, not your fault, it's because many of the CDs don't report interest until the end of their term, but there's a projected income on the bank statement of $100,000 each year income, so that's $8,300 a month.
That's awesome, that is amazing, yes.
Awesome.
Okay, gentlemen, I cannot tell you all how much I appreciate your work and effort, Lynn and Jeff and Brock, working on, all you've done on ARPA. Brock and Andrew are beyond speech, um, you guys have done just a great job, and I appreciate, I can't tell you how much we appreciate your availability and your off-hours. Brock, you've done a great job, and Greg and Lynn, moving that money was just phenomenal, so thank you both very much, and I'm sure from everybody in the city. So, okay, on to new business. We have, um, dealt with the signage issue, so we need to move to the ARPA proposal for Kers Mill Estates. Michelle, do you want to read that, please?
No.
That would be, um.
Pink.
Pink, thank you. A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley approving the distribution of American Rescue Act ARPA funds to the Homeowners Association of Kers Mill Estates.
Is that it?
That's it, yes, sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine.
You have to make your question.
A motion and a second, please?
Oh, no, we have some amendments.
I'm sorry?
We would like to make two amendments.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. Um, so in the earlier version of this resolution, it explained why Kers Mill Estates was not getting 100% of the requested money. And I understand there was maybe too much detail in that explanation, but it looks odd to me that the statement today says they requested an amount, and we're going to give them a smaller amount. Could we at least amend this to say, back at the point down at the bottom of the document, that we're distributing $95,062.57? Put a parenthetical comment in, the maximum amount allocated to Kers Mill Estates, could we at least do that? I would, I would like to make an amendment to that effect.
So we got a motion?
Any discussion?
Me a second.
Motion a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Discuss.
So I'm sorry, I'm, I'm brushing the fences, sorry.
I like where, where your head's at. Um, the only reason it's not there is because it, just to make it consistent with Clarkson Mill Farm, Farm Mill or whatever it was, the $6,000 one we approved last month, but was the same back pattern where they requested more than we approved, and it didn't include a parenthetical as to why we didn't approve the full amount.
I thought this was, um, okay, all right.
But, but that's why it's not there, it doesn't mean we can't put it in, but.
From now on.
For background, yeah, that's why we don't have, but.
Yeah, yeah, good, good point. So I'm proposing to put it in from now on, yeah, starting with this one.
Any other discussion?
So there was a motion to amend the resolution, is there a second on that?
Lynn, second.
Oh, that was to discuss, I thought, okay, all righty, sorry.
So, now, can we say, motion or vote to?
Amend.
Amend, thank you.
Can you state the question specifically, in terms of what, what the actual amendment is, what?
I will let Michelle read that, please.
Well, I made the motion, I'll make.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
The motion is to add a parenthetical comment after our figure that we're giving them, to simply say, this is the maximum amount that was allocated to Kers Mill Estates.
Ayes and nays, voice votes?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, motion passes, so.
Did you abstain?
Okay. You did?
Make your motion.
What? Did you abstain?
That just happened.
Okay, so, in that case.
There's another amendment. Right, change the time.
Yeah, we still have to.
On West Hampton. Yep, we're done.
Okay, so, I need a motion and a second to, uh, vote on the ARPA proposal being granted to Kers Mill Estates for their application.
It's, it's been amended and approved.
The amendment was approved.
Right, once that's approved, that's it, according to Roberts rules.
Right, we have approved the resolution.
You approved, we approved the amendment, but not the resolution.
So, the vote would be to approve the resolution as amended?
Yes.
Once the amendment passes, that's the end of the, of the voting.
I don't understand it to be that way.
So, because the main motion was to approve the resolution.
So, and my motion was to approve the resolution with the amendment.
Uh, I thought you were, I thought your motion was only to amend.
Okay.
And discuss further, the amended version.
So, if, if we're discussing someone's request for offensive, that's at six feet high, and there's a motion to amend that request to four feet high, and that passes, that's, that's, that's it, the, the request is approved at four feet high.
So, we are vote, we have already voted to accept and approve the Kers Mill Estates.
Yes.
Application as amended.
Yes.
Okay.
Moving right along.
There you go, all right. Um, there you go, tally. Resolution, ARPA payment to West Hampton. I need a motion and a second.
There's also an amendment, a second on this one.
Okay, and that would be the same thing.
The motion first, or do we make the motion to amend first?
Motion to amend first, right?
To approve this as amended. Yeah, to make, to approve that as amended, and I want to change it to, from the distribution to payment.
So, if, I'm sorry, if you look at the second page.
Oh, you got that.
It's just inserted in red and circled, and it says, the distribution was crossed out and the payment would be inserted.
The, the, the reason we want to do this is the title is issued is identical to the one that was approved at last month's meeting, which was to approve the distribution. Now that they have done the work, submitted the, the needed invoices and lien waivers, now we're voting to make the payment. Just changing one word from distribution to payment.
Okay.
Did we have a second on that?
I second that.
You seconding that?
Okay, so.
This is voting to approve as amended.
Voting to approve as amended.
Yeah, is there any discussion? We'll be in the next.
I'm getting lost in all the discussions, thank you. Is there any discussion to this motion? Nope. I'd like to call for a voice vote then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstain?
Andrew? Okay. Resolution passes, I forget, I'm supposed to do that. Okay, the next thing is, uh, a request to approve Marquette's marching band request to place a banner announcing their craft fair. This needs to be read twice, Michelle, can you?
Oh, um, actually, that doesn't even need to be read.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, is there, I'll just ask right up the bat, is there any discussion about this? How many days?
Michelle, do we need a motion and a second?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I move that we approve Marquette High School's special event application.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion?
There's a banner in there. There is discussion.
It's, it's at the front entrance, where, where their electronic sign is right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm vote though.
I know, I'm, I'm writing, I'll get there, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It passes. Okay, now, we have to read Bill 0531, this is to add a word to Section 405.060 regarding the word of structure, and, Michelle, you have to read that twice?
I do. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri by adding language in Title IV Zoning Regulations, Article II, Districts and District Regulations, Section 405.060, Subparagraphs E, E1, E3, and E5.
Second reading? I thought that comes later. Okay, now, this, it comes here, okay, any discussion?
And this was focused on zoning?
This is.
And their feedback was positive?
It was all five of them, it was unanimous, and Honora did attend that meeting, um, and our code up until now says no buildings shall go beyond the building line, and this now will say no building or structures.
So, the, the backstory was explained in the minutes of the September 30th Planning of Zoning Commission, which was sent out.
Yeah.
And it's in, in the packet, too, tonight.
Okay, second reading?
Yes, please. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri by adding language in Title IV Zoning Regulations, Article II, Districts and District Regulations, Section 405.060, Subparagraphs E1, E3, and E5.
Do we ask for, we don't ask for any more discussion, right?
Right.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay.
Okay.
Call roll, please.
Honora Schiller?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
Josh Swig?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
Yes.
And Greg Bogosian?
Yes.
And Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, we will now vote on 0532, again, a language change regarding corner lots and site distance triangle. Michelle, would you read, please, one time?
I would love to, thank you. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, entitled IV Zoning Regulations, Article II, Districts and District Regulations, Section 405.080, Paragraphs, Paragraph E, Use Regulations, by adding language to Subparagraph 1, Front Yard and Building Line.
Any discussion?
I have, I have a question, so I understand this applies to the question of this tree right next to the street in one of the subdivisions, so where this came up.
Right.
Would this also apply, so, um, you know, in our city, there are homes that sit on corner lots, are in curves of a road, where the back of the house is visible from the street, does that apply to them, where they might have trash containers, for example, sort of at the back of their house, but it's still visible?
Well, on trash containers, our, our code specifically says from the front sight, from the frontage, so, um, I, okay, I get what your point is, street frontage, I think.
Patrick?
I bet Patrick is looking this code up right now, the way it was written.
Does this, does this, um, issue?
Does this, does this issue have backstory? You mentioned a tree.
Yes.
This has been a recent issue as well?
Yes.
It's come up?
Yes.
Okay. But a tree is different than a building line, so how are those?
Well, it's what can go in the site triangle and obstruct the view of an intersection.
I can just read from the minutes of the P and Z.
Please.
Question was asked again, did this pertain to anything currently being discussed, which it was, and the mention of a tree in one of our subdivision's corner lots was investigated at length.
Issue have.
The tree is blocking the view of the street.
Okay.
Sorry.
From Patrick.
Okay.
Brock? I've got the camera, you know, from, from the old computer. Would that work better, do you think, for Patrick?
No.
Okay. Or can we just put him on?
We could call him.
Yeah.
Does he have audio on the Zoom? Instead of listening to the audio on the YouTube?
He's not hearing us, but he's getting it through live streaming. And when I test it, it works.
Hello?
Hey, Patrick, we're, I got you on speaker. We are discussing the change regarding the site distance triangle and the corner lot.
Correct, correct, correct. Greg, want to know what is the backyard, the trash receptacle?
Yes.
This is, from my understanding, this is the, the front, frontage of the house is as perpendicular as it looks at the street. The corner, the house only has one front yard. This is designed for the side angle distance or obstructions in a, the site, you know, redefining it, the side triangle. So, a trash can in the back of the house is not in the side distance triangle. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, you're referring to an object creating an obstacle to, to a safe view of the street.
Correct, so like, if the trash can is by the rear or side entrance garage, on a corner lot, that is not obstructing, it's not beyond the building line, it's not in the side distance triangle. This code is not addressing that issue.
All right, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So.
This code is not addressing?
Trash cans.
Got it. And the site distance triangle is a point in the front? One point in the front yard?
If you have, yeah, if you have.
It's this. This would be a site triangle.
What is our site distance triangle? Is it 45 foot or what?
So, the site triangle that you're referring to.
It's from the middle of the intersection.
Is, no, it's these corners of the lots.
Okay.
So, if you have somebody coming this way.
To answer your question, Honora, our, our sight line, they're based on the speed limit, but also the angle of the road as you approach the intersection.
So, it's different for each one?
It varies, yes.
Okay.
So, you can't block the, the clear view of the intersection?
Understood and agree. I don't get any of that from what's in here. This is talking about moving building lines. Is that right?
Patrick, are we talking about moving, we're not talking about moving building lines in the?
On corner lots, a front yard and a side yard.
Well, that's describing it. But what it says is.
No, we're describing what, there is a front yard, the line, and where it applies on corner lots. We're not moving building lines, we're just stating with clarity that there is a 75-foot building line, you cannot put a structure or plant material in the, in that area that would obstruct the line of side triangle.
Andrew, are you referring to paragraph E1?
Yes. On the front, it's 75 feet. Cool, got it. We're adding on a corner lot, you're making it 75 feet on the side yard, too. And no longer have a back of 50 feet. So, you're tripling the size of the, of the no build zone on each corner lot, on the two sides of the triangle.
But the, the reference is where the property fronts a street. And in this case, on a corner street, you front two streets. You front.
And that, and we're not, for clarity, we're not adding a new setback. That, the setback is already in existence. And this issue comes in front of the Board of Justice and pretty often, where people want a variance because they sit on a corner lot, that their buildable space is reduced by this ongoing 75-foot setback. I think what Michelle was trying to do by adding this was clear up the site distance triangle issue that we're running into. And put it in one place, so it's easy to find.
Okay, I don't see anything about site distance triangle in here.
The last sentence.
I see, yes. But we're talking about, right now, the front is 75.
Right.
Not site distance triangle.
Right.
The building lines.
Right.
The front is 75.
In the center.
The sides are 25.
No.
Seventy-five.
On a corner lot, it's 75.
It's 75 feet from the street.
It already is?
Yes.
Yes.
So, this, this is your 75 feet. Okay, right there. You also have 75 feet on this corner. Even if your house is facing here, and this is your door.
Okay.
You have still 75 feet from this street.
From a street, not another lot.
Correct.
Right, that's a side. Our code always, I'm sorry, no. Our code always stated through lots, which gives you a 75-foot front and a 75-foot back. It defines corner lots, but it doesn't say this, that it's 75 and 75. But that is what we've always done.
Okay, okay. I read this to, you're adding some language about the side yard on corner lots, and I took that to read a neighbor, not a street, but a neigh, two adjoining lots, that would then be 75 feet. Am I incorrect in that?
Two adjoining lots, one's on a corner and the other is not.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I will be quiet.
And how does this pertain to things that are currently in existence? I mean, this tree, for example, it'll be in the site triangle if we approve this.
You want to know if they're grandfathered?
Effectively, yeah.
Because I, I answered it the best I could in planning and zoning.
Okay.
And, and I said that Patrick, last, last month, said that, that 10-foot drainage was, was grandfathered. So, I would assume this would be also. However, I did say that he could clarify at this meeting.
Patrick?
Yeah, technically, it's a pre-existing non-comfulminous use because it's not expressly prohibited. On the tree, specifically on the tree issue, the police already went out and looked at it and gave us an opinion that they didn't see that it was dangerous or obstruction. Basically, the police said they don't want to deal with it. So, I told Michelle, we can't have them cut it down because our witnesses to say it's a violation are telling us, eh, we don't have a problem with it. So, we'll be spinning our wheels. But, yes, if, right now, any structure that we find, or maybe an issue that it's, if it's in that area, it may be grandfathered because it was in existence before we clarified this code.
Does that clear it up?
Did I clear it up or does it make it more muddy?
Yeah, no, it's.
It's good.
It's in effect after, it doesn't affect stuff that's already there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there may be some.
All right. All right, second reading, please.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, entitled IV zoning regulations, Article II, districts and district regulations, Section 405.080, paragraph E, use regulations, by adding language to the subparagraph number one, front yard and front building line.
Call for a vote? Roll call, please.
And that would be Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Greg Bogosian?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
Abstain.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
And Honora Schiller?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. All right, next one is discuss and pass Bill 0533. This is changing the title of the city clerk to read city administrator slash city clerk. Michelle, would you read, please?
This one would be my harder. An ordinance, and, and thank you, Mayor.
We're not there yet.
Yes, and amendment, amending, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, entitled I, Government Code, Chapter 120, by deleting Article IV in its entirety and adding a new Article IV, city administrator slash city clerk.
Any discussion?
You've really written out what her position's jobs are. But I don't think that it's the city administrator. A city administrator is over more than one department, and our city, this city doesn't have more than one department. So, the job descriptions you showed us of the small cities naming a city administrator actually have parks. So, I think it's more a clerk position, if you read it, and also maybe an office manager, but not a city administrator. Also, I'm afraid if in the future someone applies for the position and they apply for a city administrator, they're going to be very disappointed when it's mainly clerk jobs. I think that's what I would say. And a clerk person applying for a clerk position might be turned off by a city administrator, that they don't want to be administrator, knowing what it is.
Anybody else have any discussion? Anything you want to add? In my experience, and I've done a bunch of, I've done a lot of research in this and talked to a number of towns, both large and small. And in my personal opinion, having watched Michelle in this position for as long as she has occupied it and executed it, there is no doubt in my mind that she functions as a city administrator. She has Andrea who reports to her. If we hire a part-time code inspector and/or building inspector, that gentleman will, or woman, will also report to her. She will have administrative responsibility, supervision responsibility. And I expect that, please God, this is not soon, but when we have to report, replace her, it will have to be someone who is much better suited to being more than a clerk, simple clerk. That it's going to have to be someone who has experience or education commensurate to what Michelle has acquired over her career, and that is extensive. We do not have parks, you are correct. We don't have a sanitation department, you are correct. But any question that any citizen in this city has can be answered by Michelle and has been so. And again, Michelle has Andrea who reports to her and will probably have a building commissioner who reports to her. So, that's my opinion. I think that's the end of discussion, right?
I think I have a question also about deputy clerk. A deputy clerk has authority to do anything that the city, that the clerk from this description is, can do when she is gone. Is that what we want? I think it's more an assistant clerk rather than a deputy clerk.
Do we have any plans to appoint a deputy clerk or a deputy city clerk?
I think we even took that out of the code when we recodified.
Recodified, yeah, we did.
That was removed. And, and it was Scott Douglas who suggested that it be an assistant administrator. And I think that's what we changed.
Yeah, and Marge, Marge felt that that was consistent with the change in title that we were hoping to achieve. So, and Honora, you will have an opportunity, please, if you would be so willing to take a look at all those edits when they're available.
I'm just concerned that in the future, if we're saying deputy clerk, that they can do all of these jobs, that it's going to be a lot more expensive.
Well, hopefully, with all the wise investments that Greg and Lynn are achieving, we'll have the money to pay for that.
What I see in this ordinance under Section C3, it says nothing herein shall preclude the appointment of a deputy city clerk by the board. So, if we feel it's necessary, we're in charge of doing that. We're in charge of voting on it. It would be our responsibility to pick somebody who could do the work. And not pick somebody who can't do the work.
Is only suited to be.
Not, not able to do the work.
Yeah. Cannot preclude.
And.
So. Any more discussion? Michelle, would you read a second time, please?
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, entitled I, Government Code, Chapter 120, by deleting Article IV in its entirety and adding a new Article IV, city administrator, city clerk. Roll call?
Call roll, please.
All right.
Uh, pardon, does this require a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes, it does, thanks, Greg, I'm sorry.
All right. I move that we approve Bill Number 0533.
Second?
Thank you.
All right, okay, roll call. Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yeah.
Honora Schiller?
No.
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Greg Bogosian?
Yes.
And Andrew Lowe?
Yes.
Bill 0533 passes. Congratulations, city administrator.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you all. I really, really appreciate it. I will work hard for you.
Always do.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on here is discuss flock cameras. We've talked about this briefly. I've talked to the woman who is the regional sales manager for our area. Between what she recommends and Chris Conley and the police recommend, they are suggesting that we would have four cameras. Two would be placed on Kurzmail Road, one roughly going northeast and the other going southwest. And then one on Clarkson, two on Clarkson, one towards southbound traffic and one toward northbound traffic. That would effectively trap almost all of the traffic that goes through Clarkson Valley, with the exception of a small section of Valley Road, which is not really much of a through road. The price on these cameras has gone up over the past couple, three years. Initially, they were much less expensive. There is a five-year contract available, which would then lock you into the annual fee. The annual fee is $3,000 per camera. We can do it in one year, one-year enrollments if you wish. We can do it in two, three, four, or five-year enrollments if we wish. Thoughts, discussion?
So, sorry, these are the flock safety falcons?
Yes.
And there's only two on this quote, so we can assume it's going to be.
There would be twice that.
Double the price.
Right. And that's, and if we only wanted to do two, we could only do two, but you'd only trap really effectively Kurzmail Road, which is a high-volume traffic street.
Yeah. I know we've discussed this before, what's the adoption rate around us? Because the idea with the flock is, the early adopters kind of pay the heaviest price by initiating the flock, whereas the late adopters sort of just augment it.
And I'm, to be honest, I've had, I've had a challenge trying to identify that specific number, because there are so many flock cameras in the area which are not owned by the cities. So, Baldwin, Ellisville, Chesterfield. Chesterfield, I think, has less than 10, but there are probably more than 50 cameras in the city of Chesterfield, flock cameras. But they're all privately owned. So, anyway, Mike Isel was talking about them as well. It's probably something that we need a little more research into, but at this point, before we go too far down that rabbit hole, I want to know what sort of interest there is.
This first came up in Forest Hills in the first year of the COVID pandemic, when, that summer, summer of 2020, we had a. in the summer, summer of 2020, we had a pretty, an unbelievable rash of variable crimes being committed in Forest Hills. And the result of that was to put cameras up that tracked vehicles coming in, assuming that if a crime occurred at 4:30, you would look at who's coming in shortly before 4:30. Today, I'm not sure what problem. I mean, that problem's gone away. Everyone who was involved has been arrested, convicted. What problem are we addressing?
One is the through traffic and the other is the accessibility of all that footage by other cameras and the system itself. The Forest Hills system is independent of anything else.
I understand that. I'm asking, what crime wave are we addressing today?
It's not necessarily a crime wave, it's just anticipating anything that develops in any through traffic that occurs. The, we had the gentleman in Curzmill Estates who was attacked at his home. He lives back toward the back in the subdivision and somebody followed him home from Chesterfield Valley and attacked him and mugged him and stole his watch and he was injured badly. And they were able to follow these folks on some of the cameras that I believe when they went through, I think it was Ellisville, sorry, I think it was Ellisville, I think it was down the corner of Clarkson and it might have been Clarkson Manchester, I'm not, I don't remember exactly what intersection it was, but the flock cameras enabled them to track that vehicle. I think they ended up in Tennessee or Kentucky. And they were able to identify him and follow him based on the cameras available. So it's, it's not as if, you're right, it's not as if we're, you know, there's an onslaught of.
That was a success story based on the cameras that surround us.
Right. It's not as if we have an onslaught of crime, but, you know, people are going to go where they're going to get the most bang for their buck. And we've all seen the incidence of crime increase as people are migrating west. I know down in the valley, they're having some serious issues, especially with the additional development of the entertainment district down there. And I just don't want to see it come here. So it's just.
Part of the value prop is also you make it, eventually it sort of comes out that your area is kind of a no-fly zone because there, when you go in there, if you've got warrants, the second you walk in, you drive through or you walk into that, or I guess you have to be driving, but the second you drive your vehicle in there, the police know that you've got an active warrant and if there's anybody in the area, they could potentially respond to that. But like you said, the success story specifically, that was all captured by cameras that we're not paying for.
So now you're going to, we're going to assume that the police force is going to actively watch these cameras?
They do. The system automatically, is automatically alerted.
Well, they automate, they're not actively monitoring, but they do get push notifications, if you will.
Thank you.
About, yeah, they get notified.
Got it. By reading license plates?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's the owner of the vehicle or, yeah, it's the owner of the vehicle. So if you have a warrant and you borrow your buddy's car and your buddy's got a warrant, all of a sudden you're getting pulled over. But nonetheless, it's all based on license plate.
And to your point, Greg, in order to see the film on, at Forest Hills, they have to go to Forest Hills and specifically request to view that, whereas this is, as Brock says, it's an automatic push phenomenon. So it goes to, it goes, and I wish Chris was here, he could address it a lot more knowledgeably than I. It automatically alerts them that they've tracked or alerted or identified an automobile with a license that's got a warrant or other issues connected with it.
Being stolen, for example.
Well, he spoke about it previously. We've had this on the agenda before. I'm, I'll say if we've got an extra $12,800 in the budget, or if you buy four cameras, that's more like $20,000, I can think of probably other things to use that on.
Four cameras wouldn't, how would that be, $20,000?
Well, you've mentioned four. This quote has two on there for $6,000. And so instead of $12,800, it would be closer to $20,000-ish?
Twenty-five.
I was told that they, each camera was $3,000 annually.
Yeah, so you add $6,000.
And you mentioned four.
So.
This quote has two cameras on it.
Right, so.
So this $6,000 turns into $12,000.
Right, that's what I said.
Regardless.
$12,000 turns into $18,000.
Regardless.
Eighteen, eight.
Fine, $18,800. The point is, there are other things we could do with that money if we're, if there's, if there's $12,800 or $18,800 laying around, I think there's probably other things I could think of before this. That's all I'm saying.
Well, that's what I'm asking. If there's interest in pursuing or looking into it, I will, and if not, I'm not.
I don't think this is something that Lieutenant Conley is going to die on the hill for. It didn't seem like it last time. He gave us some information and he said, yeah, okay, it's great. You create a flock in your local area. I'd be happy to ask him again and really if he could, if he wants to make a recommendation or not, but.
Okay.
I, I would think that would be a good idea personally.
Greg?
Do or don't?
I do think that'd be a good idea.
Greg, Lynn?
I'm with Andrew.
Lynn?
I think I would say hold off for now.
Brock?
Not, not a bad idea, but I'm with Andrew and Lynn.
Okay. Honora?
No.
Okay. Okay, then we'll just let it lie. Okay. Last item on my list is we need to discuss the acquisition of workers' comp insurance. And to Patrick's point, I believe we were all, he, I, a couple of us were rather shocked to realize that Clarkson Valley has never had workers' comp insurance. So in other words, if Andrea or Michelle would fall down the stairs, we're exposed to any liability associated with it. So Lynn has gone out and gotten some good information about some very reasonable insurance coverage for this. So Lynn, you want to explain it?
Yeah, actually, law reads that you're not required to have workers' comp insurance if you have fewer than five employees. However, you are responsible, even if you have one employee. You're also responsible for contract employees while working, in our case for the city.
So that would include a building inspector?
That would include a building inspector, yes.
So if he walks out to a job site and trips over a two-by-four, we're responsible for that.
Yeah, yeah. The workers' comp is state-mandated no-fault insurance system that pays benefits to workers injured on the job to cover medical care, part of the loss wages, but the big thing is permanent disability. That's where your big exposure is. So employers receive immunity from civil lawsuits if you have workers' comp insurance.
Good work, Lynn. Thank you.
So basically, workers' comp insurance is based on your payroll factor. And got some quotes, got one from Missouri Employers Mutual through the Charles Crane Insurance Agency. It would base on our payroll and cost the city a little less than $1,200 a year than our workers' comp coverage.
I think that's pretty reasonable. Can we, motion?
Yeah, is that?
Yeah, it covers a million dollars for each accident, bodily injury by this, million dollars by disease for each employee, so.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to weigh in one way or the other? Or do we want to make a motion?
I think this is great. This is maybe something that has been some way a certain amount of time and we're now correcting it, so.
Yes.
Again, thank you.
City's exposed, so that's whether you want to close that exposure or not, that's.
Do I hear, can I ask for a motion in a second?
I don't, I'm.
We've got a, we've got a motion. Go ahead.
Just, you want to make a motion out of what, you have one, did?
I talked to others, Marshall Clinton, which is a big insurance agency, won't take anybody that is less than $40,000 annual premiums. Talked to Missouri Rural Association, if those workers' comp insurance, they said they'd be about $1,800 and they don't like the right in Tinkles County because rural, not the rural.
Rural versus urban?
Versus urban.
But am I right that the Crane Agency is a brokerage?
Yes.
So they.
And Missouri Mutual, and Missouri Employees Mutual would be the underwriter.
Yeah, so the Crane Agency was able to look at multiple avenues for you.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So do we want to make a motion to, in second to?
I'll make a motion that we accept a quote for the workers' comp insurance from Charles Crane Agency through Missouri Employers Mutual, that the cost would be $1,183 annually.
Second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Brock. Okay, this is a voice vote, right? Correct. Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? You're insured. Yay. Andrea. Don't fall down any stairs.
Yeah, don't get any ideas, ladies.
Okay, last, one of the last couple of things is the audit. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the audit? Any discussion?
I'll make a motion, wait, oh, yeah.
Second?
I second it.
Any discussion? No discussion?
No.
Okay. Voice vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
I have, can I ask you a question?
You had to do that.
Before, before Andrew's on the invoice, at the bottom, it was the numbers, is that for the sewer lateral program money? We got $490,000 and there's $90,000 left.
Right.
Which, at the rate we're spending it, would be about another 20 houses. Then what happens?
Then we're out. Then we have to stop.
So more money's coming in.
Well, each annually it comes in.
Oh.
Okay, so it's the $28 per house that you pay annually. That's what comes in from all of our residents. And then it adds up to, what is it? I don't know, 20, anyway, almost $27,000, I think, $26,000. But then, but then we spend a lot of that annually.
Oh, we're already replenishing.
But every year it comes in, yes.
How much?
About $26, $27,000.
Oh, so that's not very much.
Yeah.
It was an important benefit to me personally. So we had a sewer backup and about 80% of the cost was covered by this program.
Wow.
Which is very.
That was the same thing.
Yeah, and you did. All right, now can we vote, really?
On what?
I, well.
We're waiting for Andrew.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Is there something you're going to throw on?
I have a question. Brock has sent around some questions like, do we need to have everything, I guess, that you just put it on the, where you report our packets? You, you mentioned that.
On Google.
On Google Drive.
What?
Are you talking about on, on Google Drive or our shared drive or, yes?
Is that what you are suggesting or what?
Well, it's just something we could think about, going to a purely electronic version of this.
So you're saying instead of this, I mean, I never use this.
I know. But sometimes the latest and greatest is in here and it's not in there, so. But yeah, that's just something we could conceivably do, although it would require everybody bring their laptop or.
Right, and I don't want that.
Yeah. No, I think it could go to like, and you opt to get an electronic packet, so that way Michelle and Andrea only have to put together two of these instead of six or eight or however many.
Nine.
You would have the option.
Nine.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're headed, yeah.
Yeah.
An opt-in, where if you only want the electronic, throw it on your shared drive instead of print. We'll do that.
My other question is, you said about having the minutes smaller.
Yes, more abbreviated, yes.
What you abbreviated out was about the question, for instance, the question about the tree where the boundary was. A lot of people wondered about that. So I think it was good that that was in the minutes. So when people read the minutes, they saw that that was there. So I think her minutes are good. I don't think we should shorten them.
Okay. The genesis of that discussion was just, the minutes are amazing, incredibly detailed, almost like an encyclopedia of every one of these meetings. However, strictly speaking, the minutes are the main mode, the motions and the votes and the business that was, that transpired here. Not necessarily Greg said this, then Andrew said this, then Sue said this, and then we called for a vote. Because then you open yourself, like, well, no, I didn't say that, I think Honora said that, and just sort of things like that. So the idea was, do we want to move towards a more succinct, purely action-based minutes or do we want to continue with the full?
That's right. Isn't it the case now that our discussions are going to be on the record?
Yeah.
And anyone can refer to them with the live streaming now because it's all online.
Yeah.
And then the other thing was, we took a parliamentary procedures class given by Kevin L. Peep, and he really suggested, suggested that brevity was best. And plus, I think Brock, Michelle said that you guys are tagging the, the live stream, so it will be easier to refer to certain sections rather than him to listen to the whole.
Yeah, in the description, the recordings are, it's basically the agenda, just the time code next to it. So you click on it and it takes you right to that point in the video. So if you only care about nine C, then that's, it's a one.
What do other cities do as far as what they put in their minutes, you know?
They, they varied. I pulled up, what, five different cities? Just, this was just over the weekend and sent those to Sue, but they really varied. But no one has discussion like I do. Okay, so wait a minute, before you, Andrew, jump in there, I get to say that miscellaneous, any comments for the greater good? Nope, okay. We don't need to close meetings, so we'll just move on. So Andrew?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Say ayes and nays?